Good evening, everyone. Township of Edison Zoning Board of Adjustment, Adjustment Special Meeting is now in session. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975 has been provided by the annual notice published in the Home News and Tribune on December 28, 2019, and has been posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 5, 2020. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America through the Republican Party's standing witness. We pledge allegiance to God through his testament to liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Cassandra.
Ms. Shaw?
Present.
Mr. Bignell?
Here.
Mr. Carley?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Present.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Sadadha?
Mr. Taglianetti?
Present.
Mr. Mansuri?
Present.
Mr. Schmuel?
Here.
Vice Chair Ski Bar?
Here.
And Chair's Woman, Federer?
Here. Thank you, Cassandra. Good evening, everyone. Just my usual announcement. As you see, we have a full calendar this evening, so we will see where we are at 10:00 and then make a decision as to what the following procedure will be after that. Having said that, Cassandra, call the first case, please.
Case number Z29, 2019, Ashesh Patel, 250 McKinley Street, Edison, New Jersey, 08820, Section 37, 63, 1, 2, 3, and 6. Bulk variances being sought to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling on a vacant, undersized lot. Applicant is also seeking preliminary and final plot plan approval. Minimum lot area required is 10,000 square feet. Existing is 6,250 square feet. Minimum lot width required is 85 feet. Existing is 50 feet. Minimum combined side yard setback required is 25 feet. Proposed is 20 feet. Affected property is located in the RBB zone designated as Block 922, Lot Number 1B on the Edison Township Tax Map. All paperwork is in order.
Thank you, Cassandra. Good evening, Mr. Wiley.
Good evening. Tonight is what we call an isolated, undersized lot. We have sent letters to the three adjoining property owners indicating our interest to either sell the lot to them or to buy a portion of their property. Two of the adjoining properties are actually Edison Township, but we've got no responses to any of them. I'd like to introduce them, have marked as A1.
Thank you.
I'm also in receipt of the Township zoning report dated February 24, 2020, and we will comply to its conditions. At this point, I'd like sworn in our expert for tonight, Mr. Wellinger.
Sir, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And state your full name for the record.
Matthew Wilder, W-Y-L-D-E-R. I have testified before this board previously. I'm a licensed planner and engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as a certified flood plan manager and a certified municipal engineer.
Yes, thank you. We'll accept your qualifications, Mr. Wilder.
Yes. Could you describe the property for us?
Sure. So, as Mr. Wiley had indicated, it's 250 McKinley Avenue. It's Lot 1B in Block 922. This property was-
Excuse me, Mr. Wilder, just bring that microphone a little closer. Thanks.
Is that better?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
This property was part of the Highland subdivision number five from 1926, and development in this area really started in the, sort of in the '70s of any substance, with the biggest boom occurring in the '80s. The property exists on McKinley in between Revere Boulevard, which is a cul-de-sac, and Beatrice Parkway to the south. The property is 6,250 square feet in area and is approximately 50 feet wide by about 125 feet deep. Currently, the property is vacant and exists of indigenous woods. The property immediately abutting to the north is also a vacant property, and the properties located south of the subject property are developed with single-family homes. So, we are located in the RBB zone, which has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. Due to the fact that the property is undersized with respect to the minimum zone requirements, that's sort of driving the variances that we're here seeking this evening. So, I have one exhibit this evening that I'll mark as A2. And all this is, is a colorized version of the Township's tax map sheet number 92, which shows the subject property, 250 McKinley, highlighted in green, and the adjoining lots highlighted in pink. So, you'll also notice there's some writing in the right margin of the plan that shows the lot area and the lot width for the adjoining. As this table illustrates, beyond our individual property being undersized, the adjoining properties are similarly undersized. So, any transfer of property from them to us or from us to them would either exacerbate a nonconforming condition or render a property undevelopable. So, the application before you this evening is for a two-story, single-family home with various appurtenance site improvements: an asphalt driveway, a covered entryway in the front, and a patio in the rear of the home. So, we are requesting three variances this evening. The first is lot area. The second is lot width. And then the third is combined side yard setback. These are all really driven by the fact that the property is an undersized lot. So, I believe the variance being sought could be granted under the C1 hardship variance criteria. It boils down to the fact that the property is about 58% or 62%, 58% undersized, so it exists as 62% of what is required. And similarly, it is, the width is 58% of what is required. When you consider the fact that the property is undersized with respect to width and area and that there is no adjacent land available for purchase, that is what dictates the, obviously the lot width and lot area variances, but also the combined side yard setback. A strict application of the combined side yard setback would result in a home that could only be 25 feet wide, which is just not consistent with the current housing stock that you'll find in the area. So, again, I believe these are pretty straightforward cases of C1 variances, but I also believe that the variances could be granted under the C2 variance criteria. That oftentimes provides a little bit more flexibility relative to variance requests. So, 40:55D, 70C2 states that "When an appeal relating to a property would advance the MLUL, and furthermore, the benefits of the deviation substantially outweigh the detriment, a variance can be granted." So, I typically like to look at the detriments first and foremost, and I don't see any associated with this proposed development. This is a residential development in a residential zone surrounded by other residential developments, so I see no negative impact. That being said, I do believe it advances several goals of the MLUL, specifically goals E and G, which sort of run together. Goal E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations in the township. Again, this is a property that's zoned residential, should be developed residential. And then Goal G is to promote sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, of which residential is one. At the risk of sounding repetitive, again, it's zoned residential surrounded by other residential dwellings, so this is where residential development should be placed. So, for these reasons, I believe the variances being sought can be granted under the C1 or C2 variance criteria. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question.
Yes.
That is, how many cars can be parked on-site?
You can fit four in the driveway, and then you also have the garage.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Or Mr. Wiley, Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, I'm looking at the plot plan. It seems that there is a concrete sidewalk that bisects the driveway. Am I understanding-
That's correct.
Is the sidewalk a township sidewalk?
So, this portion of McKinley Ave., for whatever reason, when the township constructed it, was only partially developed. So, about half of the roadway was constructed. The interesting thing about this is, this is the only property that would actually be accessing McKinley, this portion of McKinley Ave. for access. The property to the north fronts on Beatrice, and then the property to the, let me just make sure I have my north. So, excuse me, the properties to the west front on the Beatrice Parkway, and the property to the east is the undeveloped parcel that I would expect to front or access Revere Boulevard, which is the cul-de-sac immediately adjacent to this. So, we actually front on a semi-improved portion of McKinley Avenue. So, it essentially acts or operates at the driveway for this individual property.
Is that included in the lot area?
No. So, the property, the lot area stops just behind the existing concrete sidewalk or the proposed concrete sidewalk.
Okay. Gotcha. Any other questions for Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
So, is this the applicant's primary home for residence, or they're going to sell it? They're going to rent it?
I believe their intent is to, is to sell the property.
Sell the property? And what about 248 McKinley Street? Who owns that property? Are there any attempts being made to purchase that property by the applicant?
We sent letters to the three adjoining properties. Two were owned by the township, and the third was, all three property owners did not respond, although two of them were owned by the same entity, which is the township.
Is the property owned by township right next to this lot?
Yes.
Yes, so when I pulled the tax records, Lot 3A is owned by Edison Township, which is a 50-foot by 200-foot parcel. I don't have with me the owners of Lots 2A, 2B, or 1A.
Okay, Mr. Patel? Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Wilder? None? Okay. Mr. Wiley?
That concludes our case.
Okay. I'll go out to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Yeah, come on, one at a time. Come on up to the podium and be sworn in, please. Come on up here. Now, you all are within 200 feet of this property?
Outside.
Did you get a, did you get a certified letter in the mail?
No.
No? All right, then wait until my next call. Somebody, did you get a certified letter? Okay, come on up.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
At the Kanagala. I live at 67 Revere Boulevard.
Okay. What would you like to tell us, sir?
So, I am currently a senior at J.P. Stevens High School.
I commend you for coming out.
Thank you. So, my issue with this property is, I don't know how many of you have children attending it in public schools, but we are incredibly overcrowded. You know, J.P. Stevens was built for about 1,600 students, and we're now at-
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. The MLUL prohibits consideration of overcrowding as a consideration in a land use application. We can consider a notion called a fiscal impact study, which is not required specifically for this application for this particular type of lot. So, if you have anything else to add, the board can consider it. The board cannot, in its consideration, consider overcrowding by any means, as that is prohibited.
So, essentially, what you're saying is that even if this property is intended to be sold, right, I'd assume it's going to be sold by a family intending to move in with kids, that issue just has no impact on anybody else besides the people nearby. It has no impact on anybody else in the community.
Here's what I need to explain, okay? There's this mis, I guess this notion that somehow the zoning board makes the laws. The zoning board does not make laws. We follow the municipal land use law. If you want to change what the zoning board is allowed to consider, you actually have to go to Trenton and the legislators. That is not before the zoning board. It's outside of our jurisdiction. Okay? So, it may have an impact, it may not, but that's not before this board because that can't enter into their decision. If it enters into their decision, it will be overturned.
Okay. Sounds good. I think the other issue is something that's not really, something that a senior could, as in, I think the other issues that we have with this proposal are not something that I am best qualified to talk about, so I'll leave that to everybody else.
And I still commend you for coming out.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Come on up, ma'am.
I'm definitely within-
Oh, oh, wait, wait, wait. Wait, go ahead.
Would you raise your right hand, sir?
Go ahead.
Sir, you could, no, you can come up.
You'll all get a chance to speak.
Right, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, please state your full name for the record and provide your address.
Yep. My name is Samuel Wu. Okay, I live in 61 Revere Boulevard, Edison. Okay. So, I can even see the property just right across him in my back, so I'm definitely within 250 feet. Okay, to be honest, your law already says it's undersized, right? According to your law, it's not supposed to be built, otherwise we won't be here, right? So, according to the law, you're asking for an exception, and we are telling you, we are against it. But, no, we are against it because we don't think it's good for us. Okay? If you want to ask reason, well, you undervalue our property. And so, the question is very simple. If you are asking for exception, we are telling you, we don't want the exception. If you want to tell me I have to go through the law, you're asking me to hire a lawyer? Is that what you're asking?
No, we're not asking you to hire an attorney. We're just asking what you feel, and you've told us, and we just take everything into consideration.
Okay.
But the reason why there is a zoning board is because people want to do something that is not in accordance with the MLUL. And if that didn't happen, then we wouldn't be here, and we wouldn't be needed. No town would have a zoning board. Everyone that comes before us comes before us because they want to do something that isn't in accordance with the MLUL statutes.
Okay. He is my neighbor, okay? We just, he just lived right across me. Okay, just right by side. And both of us are saying we are against it. You already heard him. Okay?
Sir, if your neighbor's here, your neighbor can testify on their own behalf. You can only testify as to what you, your position is, okay?
Okay. So, anything you want to hear from me? I already told you, we are against it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, so then we'll hear from your neighbor and that other young lady that's standing up. Do you want to go up, ma'am?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, so it is clear, sir, one second, please. Sir, you said you were at 61 Revere?
Correct.
Okay, just so it's clear, 61 Revere is not on the notice list as within 200 feet, so that was outside of 200 feet, just for the record.
Okay, great. Okay, ma'am, you want to come up? You can bring that microphone down a little bit. Did you receive a certified letter?
Yes, I did.
Okay, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and state your full name for the record, providing your address.
Mohini Chi3, 69 Revere Boulevard.
What would you like to tell us, ma'am?
First question I have is, we had the same meeting six months ago, in June, so I would like to know what has changed from that meeting when we said we didn't want the property to be built to, for everybody again, to come back to this table?
Mr. Wiley, I don't-
I believe she is correct that initially, we had given notice for 222 Nicholson as well as 250. There was adjudged to be some defects, so that we came in again, but there was no ruling by the board.
Yeah, we never heard the case, correct?
Never heard the case.
Okay.
So.
That's why they're here, because we didn't hear the case the first time, because there was a problem with the way the notice went out. So, we never heard it, so it was on-
But everybody else was present to present their case, and all the neighbors were here to-
No, no, not for this one. It had to be another one, not for this one. This is a new one. And the attorney just said so, because I don't remember it either.
Because they presented, because it's the same owner who's presenting for both the cases, so it was not considered-
Was it, ma'am, was it the same address?
It was the same address, yes.
So, it was the same address that's before this board this evening?
One was on Nicholson and one was this address, yes.
Okay, this is 250 McKinley?
Yes.
This is 250 McKinley.
Only 250 McKinley?
Yes.
And it's never been before this board? This is the first time?
Well, I think, actually, it was, but it was withdrawn because it was a defect.
Withdrawn, right.
So, there was no hearing conducted. There were neighbors that appeared, that's true, but the board didn't take any testimony because it felt that there had to be some changes in the reference, I think, to the plot plan, if I recall correctly. So, but that's, that's the circumstance, but the board didn't allow testimony that night.
That's what I thought, because I don't remember that happening. Well, be it as, that's the situation, but what would you like to tell us?
Yeah, I would like to say that if we have, we already, the board, Edison Board already has a minimum requirement of 10,000 square feet, and everybody is opposed to making it less than that. Why are we coming back to the table again where the lot size is not just a few feet less, it's almost half the size?
Wait, he's not, he is not making it less, it already exists that way.
Right, so, so we should not allow a house to be built on such a small lot, which also reduces everybody else around that house, their property value, by having a small lot and a house on a small lot.
Okay.
And this, this property has, all the three dimensions are less than half of what they should be, and that was the Edison Township rule, that we didn't make that rule. It was already a Edison Township rule, so that's why we are saying we do not want this house to be built.
Okay, we'll take that in consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else within 200 feet? That means that you got a certified letter, sir, correct? Okay.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
My full name is Anand Kanagala. I live at 67-
You're going to have to do a little bit louder, sir.
I live, my name is Anand Kanagala. I live at 67 Revere Boulevard.
And what would you like to tell us, sir?
Following on to the previous thing, what I was trying to understand is, you guys do this day in, day out?
Pardon me?
You people deal with these issues, the things, all the time?
Yes, all the, yeah, last week, we had the same thing, and I think the meeting before, we had the same thing.
I'm sure it was the same thing.
There are, wait, there are a lot of undersized lots in Edison that were created years ago before the master plan that we have now.
What is the criteria where you draw the line? We have a different zone, we have a different zone, but I think, I don't know, I'm not well-versed in this, but it's a 5,000-square-foot area, parts of Edison are zoned for 5,000-square-feet lot area. Why would you, why do we have these different zones, and why would you say, you know, would a 4,000 lot, let's say you find, found a 4,000 square-foot area, would you grant it?
That's hypothetical, we can't, yeah. Yeah, any hypotheticals we cannot consider, we have to consider and we're required to consider by the municipal land use law, everything that comes before this board on a case-by-case basis. Just so it's clear, so that everybody understands that if, and I don't know, I don't get to vote, but the board does, and I want the board to be aware as well, that if this lot or this application is potentially denied, which the board has the right to do, there is the possibility it could be deemed into inutility, which means that the township would end up having to buy it. So, just so we're clear, there are undersized lots that are created. The whole purpose of a zoning board is to consider variances. That is the whole point of coming before this board. And so, they're allowed to consider certain factors which were presented by the applicant and listen to the objectors as to, or any interested persons as to their position as to why they think it's a good idea or a bad idea. Okay?
Okay, and one of the things that I will put on record, so it is clear, Edison has something called FAR, floor-aerial ratio. This application is under the percentage of building that could be put on this lot in accordance with the FAR. I am correct. So, in effect, they could even put something bigger than what they're proposing on this lot. Just want you to know, and all these things are what we take into consideration.
In that case, why do we have the zones at all?
That was something that, I don't know, they did that years and years ago. I mean, every town has it. I mean, you have your business zone, you have your residential zone, you have your OS, your RV, your RBB, you know, that was something that they did years and years ago, and we're just here to try and do things right.
So, where do you draw the line then?
We don't, we can't. We have to hear an application as it is presented. They are allowed to come before us to request a variance.
So-
That's how the law works. It's not, if you're asking for a hard and fast rule, again, you're asking for hypotheticals we have to take, and the board has to consider each case on a case-by-case basis only. That's what they're required to do. The zones have been established by, they're recommended by, and Hank, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they're recommended by the planning board. The planning board then proposes a master plan. The master plan is put before council, which has been done periodically, and then they accept it, and the zones, the zones have been around, I don't know how long, how long, Hank?
The process is backwards. What happens is the, the land use law allows for a community to master plan, and that goes to the planning board, and the planning board decides on the master plan. Once the master plan is in effect, then the power to zone the property is with the township council. So, council is the one that controls the zoning in the town. And usually, the zoning plan has to, has to be in compliance with the master plan recommendation, and to approve a zone that doesn't meet the master plan requirement takes like, I think, three-quarters of, or two-thirds of the council to even change the ordinance, to amend the zone plan. Our zone plan's been in effect for many years. It may, probably does need updating, but that's something that the governing body has to determine. But in the meantime, this board is a quasi-judicial board and has to hear, everybody has the right to bring an application, and they have to decide whether or not the surrounding area is in compliance or it isn't. Usually, it's, if the lots are similar, it's substantially detrimental to the neighbor or intent and purpose of the zone plan. So, normally, if the lots that they're proposing are around 50% or greater, then the board has some leeway. If they're less, then usually they don't go that way. So, it's, but they have to hear the case, they have to hear the, you shouldn't get mad at the board for hearing the case. They are, by law, are required to sit there and hear the case and make a decision. They don't, they just can't tell the applicant not to come in the room and make an application, so they get frustrated that way, but that's just the way the law is in New Jersey.
No, of course not.
Okay?
The question is, are you required to, will you justify your decision?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Will you be able to explain your decision?
Well, we don't really explain our position, our-
Oh, let me, Madam Chair?
Township, yes, Mr.-
Let me give him the language, all right? This is, it comes out of the land use law and case law in New Jersey since 1975, and in our report, we put the applicant should provide statutory proofs if it's a change of use, which this is not, and then the applicant, testimony relative to the substantial detriment to the public good, which is you, should any variances be granted, and then testimony relative to the substantial impairment of the promulgated land use policies. That's the zoning of the town. So, the board has to decide whether granting a variance or not is hurting or affecting you personally as a neighbor and the zone plan as a, as a community. Okay? But you got to give them the right to hear all your objections, and that's what you're doing, and they have to make their case, then you get to make your points, and to yell and scream at them, that doesn't do any good, because that's not what they're here for.
No, I'm not yelling at them.
I'm not saying, but normally, that's what happens, people come before the board and give them a hard time, but they're allowed, they have to hear the case, and then they make, they make an educated decision. They're all volunteers, they're all township residents, and so that's what they're, they're up there trying to protect your rights as well as the applicant, because everybody has rights. Okay?
And to go one step further, once we then make our decision, not necessarily this one, but it has happened to us, we've denied something, the applicant then goes and appeals it, and guess what? A lot of times, our denial is overturned, so you don't know. It goes one step further than us, it then goes to a judge.
All I'm asking for is, is there an explanation for the decision, that's all?
Yeah, well, I think you got it.
I could add just a little bit more to it. On an isolated lot, if it's undersized, the applicant has the right to develop his property, he can come and get a variance before the board, and the case law basically says that you have to seek other property that's available. So that's why he asked me if there's letters to his neighbors or whatever, did they try and buy property? If there's no, if there's nothing available, then he has the right to develop his property, he just can't stop him. So the board then has to put restraints and things of that nature. If they don't, and if they turn it down, they go to New Brunswick to Superior Court, and it's just overturned, and then the town has to waste money defending it when they should have, you know, taken any consideration in the first place. So there's a whole lot of issues that go into this thing, it's not just, you know.
No, mine is done.
Okay?
All right, thanks.
Okay, great. All right, anyone else within 200 feet? That's if you got a certified letter.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
Patrick Chen, 72 Revere Boulevard. One thing I would like to clarify, we were here last time, last June, several of us present our objection to this project, then they withdraw the, the whole case. So this is not the first time we see this case brought out for discussion.
Well, I think we.
This is the second time. So we will just echo the, the opinion, how many times we need to be going to, to do the same case again and again?
Usually, we don't, but unfortunately, the first time, there was.
After several of us make our objection, you can check the record.
All right, please let me speak. As Mr. Wiley explained, the reason last time is, as we were going along, we didn't get very far, we realized that there was an error in some of the paperwork, and that's why we stopped. Ordinarily, we don't hear the same case three, two, three times, but there was an error, so that's why we had to stop, nobody put testimony on, we knew how you felt, but you actually didn't come up like you're coming up now to present your objections on the record.
We did, we did, you can check the record.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair?
Do you remember that, Mr.?
I don't, I don't remember withdrawing the application, but under the law, again, the land use law and the case law in New Brunswick, it's called rest judicata, and if the, there's like four or five criteria that I don't have memorized, but at the top of my head, but if, if there was no decision made, they, they have the right to bring the application back. They withdrew it because they had mistakes with it, so they're trying it again. If the board makes a decision and turns, say, turns it down, they really can't come back with the same application again, because that's called rest judicata, and that would be thrown out in court and stuff. So that's, that's not the case here, because it was withdrawn and the board never made a decision. So yes, sir, you have to go through the process again, and it's a pain sometimes, but, you know, to protect your rights, you need to come here and speak your mind.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, slow on, sorry.
Okay, another case is this one. I don't know whether the, the map they show, okay? In front of this property, there's an electric pole. That pole is there, so in the middle of the property, so I don't see any way this house can be built with the driveway, four cars parked, and getting in and out. Please take that into consideration.
Okay, and we will ask Mr. Wiley when we hear from everyone.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else within 200 feet?
My name is Kavita Thukaram.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so, please let me finish. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay. State your full name for the record, providing your address.
Kavita Thukaram, 67 Revere Boulevard.
Okay, what would you like to tell us?
I'd like to object to building a, a house on a lot that's less than 10,000 square feet.
Okay, fine, thank you. Anyone else within 200, yes, sir?
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
State your full name for the record, providing your address.
Dr. Nitin Chitri. I stay, I own property at 69 Revere Boulevard, just opposite on the other side.
Okay, what would you like to tell us, sir?
First, we would like to object, obviously. The reasons being, we brought this, our property, thinking that this has a surrounding of houses which are bigger, and that maintains our land and the house value. Just we've mentioned and heard from our, you know.
That's our planner.
Person here?
Yeah.
That if we, as a town, go and reject this, and then you'll have to go back, somebody will have to go back to the court, and then you're worried about the money that the town may have to spend. The same way, I'm worried about my money, which I've spent already, and I am counting on it, that the value of that property stays the same. And if we have small houses surrounding my house, which may be bigger, the whole, the value of my property is going to go down, which probably you may not want to consider, and this is our main issue here.
Okay.
The other thing is, smaller properties, obviously, as a lot altogether, will have lesser value going forward, and obviously, you would not consider the overcrowding part, but even in the interest of the people who are living there, and when they have certain land which is surrounding that property, which is empty, might as well, I would suggest to them that they go back to those people, buy that property, have the, the bigger land, and come back to us, and then ask for the variance, than asking for a very small property, which they want to build on, and then there is going to be another small property, which the same person is going to come back and going to ask you for that. And then, what happens? That you have to consider that, because then become, this becomes a precedence, and then you'll have, my house will be surrounded by little, small little houses. Well, it's in, it's in fashion to have a little small house, but we don't want that.
Okay, we're listening to you. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard?
Did you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, and state your full name for the record, providing your address.
Yeah, my name is Manoj Kumar, I am at 74 Revere Boulevard.
Okay, what would you like to tell us, sir?
Okay, I, we moved recently from Jersey City, reason being, we have little children, and we wanted to have them, you know, the front space and, you know, backyard and everything, but then again, conforming the, the style where we are, and I guess, you know, it's very important, everybody has pointed out already, that the houses, prices goes down if we are surrounded by smaller houses. Of course, they get benefited, not us, our prices goes down, that's one point. Other thing, they bought this two property just now for $90,000. If they would have got it as in, you know, from their sister, I can still imagine, okay, you have no way, you're just inheriting it. They just bought it, two property, just adjacent, and they live on there, knowing that they will apply for variance, they'll get the house built, and then they will sell it, and they'll make profit on top of it. So it's absolutely, I am, because not only that, there's all other points people has mentioned, but I am, because the, my prices goes down, I'm paying for, you know, the whole taxes and everything, and then again, you know, we cannot tolerate something like this happening where, you know, we have smaller houses all around.
Okay, fine, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else within 200 feet? Okay, I'll now go out, oh, come on, come on, sir.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
Yeah. My name is Ming Ming Dong, I live the 75 Revere Boulevard.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Okay, I would like to object this property, because there is two same property close over there. If this, if this property, if this property get approved, the big, big house built on the small size, another one follow this sample, so make this area is so crowded. So I absolutely object this property.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want, within 200 feet of the property wanting, no, just once, I'm sorry, no, just once, I'm sorry.
Want to object officially, or is that?
No, no. As, as Mr. Bignell said, we're a quasi judicial court, so we have to go by certain rules, so unfortunately, we can't. So again, anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Okay, now I will go out to people outside of 200 feet of the property that want to be heard, yes, from before.
Raise your right hand. Do, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your full name for the record and provide your address.
My name is Ravi Desai, and I live at 207 Garfield Street. I just want to say that I've lived at this home for the last 21 years, and I've attended all the public schools in Edison, and I'm extremely grateful for all the opportunities, friends, neighbors, and educations of this town, because a lot of my successes in life are attributed to these aspects of my upbringing, and for that reason, I'm fully in support of building this new home, into which hopefully a new family can move into and raise kids who can follow my own footsteps, and take advantage of all the things that I've been able to take advantage of in Edison. I can't imagine what my life and career would be like if I wasn't given the opportunity to live here, and I would love to see more people be able to move into Edison, take advantage of the things, and I think that building this home would be a step in the right direction.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else outside of 200, yes, sir, come on up. One at a time, you'll both, you'll all get a chance to speak.
Do you, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your full name for the record, providing your address, and speak into that microphone, that was a bit soft.
Good evening, my name is Janish Patel, I live at 240 Conway Street. I don't have much else to add, except that I want to emphasize the importance of keeping Edison filled with people who care about being in Edison, along with keeping it safe for children, parents, and ourselves. And as you know, this land is, has been empty for a long time, and I think that with, I'm sorry, I want to emphasize the importance of keeping, keeping it safe for, yeah, ourselves, and I'm in support of this project for that reason. I have known Mr. Shesh and his family for, since I was the age of four, they've treated me as, you know, a son, my family is very close, and I know that the project they would like to complete is something that could be very good for the community and the neighborhood nearby as well.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Sir, come on up.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
My name is Prakash Sapray, address is 57 Revere Boulevard, Edison, and I have a few questions.
Sure.
First thing, are they going to extend the sidewalk which comes from north side, from the cul-de-sac side?
We'll find out. Mr. Wiley, can you answer that question, or Mr. Wilder?
So we are, there's a lot in between us and Revere Boulevard, so we're not proposing to put sidewalk across their frontage, but we are proposing to put sidewalk across our frontage. Does that answer your question?
Okay, so there, there won't be a continuous sidewalk coming from the cul-de-sac?
There will not be.
Okay. Second question is, how far is the driveway from the curb line?
So again, this is, this road was partially built, only half of the width was, so the, the existing edge of pavement is 22 feet, give or, plus or minus, from the property line.
Okay, from the Revere Boulevard?
Oh, no, no.
Now, from the Revere Boulevard curb line?
Oh.
How much is the edge of driveway?
I would say at least 75 feet.
Is it?
There's a lot, there's a, there's a lot that exists between the subject property and the cul-de-sac, so there, there's another lot in between us and Revere Boulevard.
Okay. And third question is, are you in compliance with ADA Act, American Disability Act? Are you going to build all that intersection according to ADA?
It's a single-family house, so.
Mr. Wiley? Okay.
And the, the only component that would need to be accessible is the proposed sidewalk, and the sidewalk.
No, because there are a lot of children there, they'll go ride bikes and all that, so I'm concerned about their safety, also.
Right, so the sidewalk that we propose will be fully accessible. So we're proposing sidewalk across our frontage, and that, that will be compliant with the requirements of ADA.
Okay, including pedestrian ramps?
So we don't exist at an intersection, there's no crossing, so we, there's no reason to install a ramp on this property.
Okay, one side it can, actually, to cross the Revere Boulevard.
Sir, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone, because I can't hear you, which means they can't hear you on TV.
So it does cross Revere Boulevard, on the other side, there is a ramp, right?
Right, but this property doesn't exist at the corner of Revere and McKinley, there's another lotage in between.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, okay, great. Anyone else, yes, come on up, sir.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
My name's Hamel Patel, I live on 18 Wayne Parkway, Edison, New Jersey. I'm just here to present my case for Mr. Patel, I'm in full support of this property being built. I'm just here to talk about the NJ Transit bus stop in the area, which is at Wood Ave and McKinley Street corner. For many New York commuters in this area surrounding 250 McKinley and Beatrice Parkway, pedestrians must walk on McKinley Ave, which has been made into a dead end by a metal barrier at this property. There is no sidewalk, which results in bushes and debris to cover a majority of the space used to walk. One of the grave dangers of this is that the unmaintained dead end being used by the pedestrians to cross McKinley Street to get to the other side causes a safety hazard for individuals making it to their bus stop. With the creation of a house at this location, one of the specifications is the creation of the sidewalk cleaned regularly, allowing this, allowing neighboring residents to get to the bus stop safely. I'm in support to build this home that will give safety to the pedestrians in this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. Anyone else outside, come on up, sir, please?
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
My name is Matthews R. Cedeas, I live in 5 Canterbury Lane. I just want to say that I'm in, in full support of this project because Mr. and Ms. Patel are outstanding citizens of our community. I've known them ever since I was younger, and they've always been willing to lend me a helping hand. They've done so much for me and everybody else in our neighborhood, ever since we, you were younger, like giving us rides from school, and, and they've always walked them, walked the bus into their home. They've always been kind to me, and I know they've been kind to everybody else, and because of this, I believe that they are essential members to our community, and I don't think that they would do anything to harm our neighborhood. So because of this, I'm in full support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else outside of 200 feet of the property? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Set, state your full name for the record and provide your address.
My name is Monica Chitray, and I live at 69 Revere Boulevard, which is less than the 200 away from the property. So I just wanted to say that I formally object to this, because my parents have been living, and I've been living at this house since, for the last 20 years about so, and now that the property value will be decreasing if the, if there are new homes being built, I'm just concerned for my parents and their retirement, because they're nearing that age at this point, and I just want to make sure that they're able to rely on this property for the value that it is right now, versus what it will be if the properties are decreasing in size and like, in, in that regard, yeah. So that's really what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else outside of 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Okay, there being none, I'll close the ca, oh, no, one time, no, one time, sorry. Mr. Wiley, would you like to sum up, please?
Yes.
Sir, I'm sorry, I have closed the case, and as I told the other gentlemen, in accordance with the rules that we go by, you can only speak once. Sir, one time only, same rule as the other gentleman, that are, those are the rules of this quasi judicial. Sir, please have a seat. Thank you.
Your statement is on the record already, thank you.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Would you like to sum up, please?
I realize that, you know, for many in the public who aren't used to land use laws, that some notions that there are competing rights comes as a surprise, but, you know, in the United States, if we use the power of the state or power of regulation to take away somebody's property rights, then that triggers what we call condemnation. So the board is left with a very difficult choice, because, you know, if the township doesn't want to pay for this lot, and in my experience, based on previous applications, they're not willing to pay for the lot, then we have a right to develop that lot, because we're zoned in a residential zone, so we have a right to develop it as a single-family house. Now, you know, some lots that have been approved by the courts, not necessarily by the board, have been remarkably smaller than this lot. But when the courts confronted with these problems, they have to say, look, you know, if the township's not interested in buying a lot, then the person should be able to build, because you can't use regulations to take away their property rights. This is a principle that, you know, exists countrywide, and, you know, it's difficult for people to understand that necessarily, that just because the township passes a set of regulations, if they don't have exceptions to those regulations, then they possibly run afoul of some basic constitutional principles. So in today's application, I think we've shown that, look, we've offered to sell our lot to the adjoining property owners, of which the township is one. We've offered to buy property from the adjoining property owners. We got no response, and this doesn't surprise-
Ma'am, can you shut that light off, please? It's right in my eyes, and it's really blinding me. Thank you.
Right.
Go ahead.
And, you know, since they're unwilling to buy it, then we're here with this, with this application, say, look, we need a variance, because it is an undersized lot. We're attempting to build it in accordance with other regulations that the township has, for instance, the floor ratio. We're trying to make sure that we have sufficient rear yard, sufficient front yard, and we've been able to achieve all those things. In fact, the only so-called new condition is the combined side yard, because we're left with a restriction. Since the public seems to be nervous about the house being small, it would seem that granting this variance would at least alleviate some of that concern. Parenthetically, I live in a community right next door, in Matutchen, in which we have many big houses and small houses right next to each other, it doesn't seem to affect property values whatsoever. So I think their concern, you know, is a little bit overstated, but, you know, it's probably better coming for me to say, look, you know, my client does have property rights, and the board has to take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Okay, having heard everything, board, and having heard Mr. Wiley, I will now go to the board. But before that, because I just want to commend the young adults that have come out this evening. I think it's great that, no matter which way you came out for, I think it's great that you are getting involved in the town that you live in, and I really commend you for that. So having said that, I'll go to the board, please, for a motion.
Madam Chair? Peter, you want to make the motion?
Actually, I had a question. Now, apparently, I guess you mentioned that there are some available properties that are owned by the town, and your inquiry to buy them was just ignored.
Yeah, was not responded to.
That were not responded to?
Right.
Again, could there be more of an effort to get, you know, either a yes or a no as to whether they-
I can't force them to respond. They don't, they don't have an obligation to respond to me. So I assume that the response is negative, and quite frankly, I've sent on other applications similar notices, and the township has not offered to sell any of their land.
Yes, Mr. Taglinetti?
Mr. Wiley, in and around that neighborhood, as you looked at the tax map, are there similar properties that are undersized that have been developed in that area?
There are. I don't have the, I don't have a number of how many of them have been undersized, but just, I was looking at it while some folks were talking. And if you look at Lot 18, which fronts on Beatrice Parkway, it's a 75-foot by 97-foot lot, size lot, so less than 7,500 square feet. The next lot over is 100 by 90, so appears to be 9,000 square feet. Lots 6A and 6B are 50-foot wide lots, similar to our lot. So from a quick overview, quick glance, it appears that there are significant, a significant number of lots which are undersized, which have been developed. And again, I think that boils down to the fact that the subdivision which created this lot and the surrounding lots is from 1926. So as zoning has evolved, several of these lots have been combined to make larger lots, and, you know, the township established a minimum standard. You still have these isolated lots that were created from that subdivision that have remained in their, in the existing state, basically.
May I just make a suggestion? Maybe the next time we're presented with an undersized lot, a couple of photographs of the surrounding area?
Absolutely.
Give us an idea of what's going on there. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bating, I'm sorry.
Is it possible for us to check internally as to whether we received those letters, number one?
Well, I was just going to address that. Mr. Wiley, I understand, because of the gravity of this, and you've seen what has transpired this evening, I understand that the letter to the town went out on February 11. If it went out on the 11th, and it went certified mail, just by knowing from my job, since I work for attorneys, that when I send something certified mail, and I go to track it online, it sometimes takes two or three days to get there, and I think there were two holidays in between.
Isn't there a green card attached there? I thought there was.
Yeah, what day was it delivered, Cassandra?
And my prior effort, I also sent green cards.
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
Are you saying that the letter was sent on February 11th of this year?
Yes.
Well, you have to give the town governing body an opportunity to react to it.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
That's only 10 days from-
Maybe we hold the vote, and let Mr. Wiley go to the town again, and see if he can work anything out, so we have a better standing and understanding. We're doing it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
May I ask too? Were the adjacent property owners offered property for sale, or?
Well, I think-
That's usually a two-way thing.
We offered either to buy or sell, standard, you know, or a standard letter.
Are those letters sent out, were they submitted with the board?
We do have-
Oh, yeah, I'm okay.
They were marked as A1. Just so everybody's clear, the green receipts are stamped as received at the Edison PO for the Township of Edison, but it does not have a date. So I don't know what date they received them.
But as I say, if it went out the 11th, I think the 12th was a holiday, and then there was the other holiday, which was the 17th. So we're talking about two holidays, and if it was just received at the PO, that means it doesn't get to where it should be going internally. So I don't know how the board feels, but I think, in light of what we've heard this evening, I think we have justification to say, Mr. Wiley, can we hold the vote? And can you please get in touch with the township to see if, one more try at it, and see what they say?
I'll be happy to direct the letter to whomever you suggest I direct the letter to. Maybe to the mayor, or maybe to the business administrator you suggest to me, I'll be happy to send the letter.
I would suggest that you send a letter to the mayor's office, making sure the business administrator has it, and perhaps a follow-up phone call.
All right.
Okay.
I'll be happy to do so.
And having said that, then we will, now, what we're, yes, Mr. Bignell?
And I would add the township clerk's office, because the clerk represents the council, and the council would be the ones to buy the property.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay. So everybody understands now what we're doing. We're not going to vote tonight. We're asking Mr. Wiley to go back to the township because of the date and the holidays in between, that perhaps the letter did not get to the right person to say yes or no. So we're asking Mr. Wiley to go back to the township to see if anything can be worked out. And because of that, then the case has to be heard. The next time you come back, no one will have an opportunity to speak. It will just be a vote. Mr. Wiley will tell us what he found out, yes or no, and then we will just have a vote.
Other question, Madam Chair?
Yes, who's?
Mr. Wiley, lot, in the exhibit I'm looking at, 1A, is that 248? 248 McKinley?
One of the properties I know is 248.
Where it says Lot 1A, 8120 square feet?
Yes.
Okay, and is that one owned by township, or that one is owned by someone else?
Based upon the tax records, that is owned by the township.
Okay, and 2A is the one empty lot, or is that something on there?
2A is developed, and it's owned by a private, private landowner.
Okay.
And Mr. Wiley, maybe you can get in touch with them also, again?
Well, we did send them a letter too, but-
Okay.
If we could have a date certain-
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do. Cassandra? Now, this is, this will just be for Mr. Wiley to say yes or no, and there'll be no, again, no more public input. It will just be for a vote. Yes, Mr. Ski Bar?
Yeah, actually, being that there will be no more testimony, can we, I guess, clarify a couple of things?
Sure, go ahead.
If this property is deemed in utility, or-
In utility, correct.
What is the fate of that property?
Well, I can only tell you based on my, I guess, prior litigation experiences, the judge says to the township, you know, if you're not gonna buy it, then I'm gonna overturn the board if it denies it. That's what happened on my last two applications that had denials. And so I suspect it would be something similar.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Taglinetti?
Lot 2A, you said it was developed?
Correct.
Correct? What is the size of that lot? Is it undersized? It's hard for me to-
Yes, 2A is 6,780 square feet. So comparable to what we're, what size we are.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Cassandra, a date for a vote, please. And by the way, no one will be getting any more notices. Tonight, the date that we're giving you will be the date, unless for some reason, something happens down the road, but we'll, we will announce it that night. But as of now, no one will be getting any more letters in the mail. This will be the next date that we will be here. Cassandra?
So just for the vote, and no more testimony, or anyone speaking?
Correct.
I can put them first on the agenda on March 31st.
Okay. So, did everyone hear that? March 31st, it will be on the agenda for a vote, and that gives Mr. Wiley a month to see what he can work out. Okay, Mr. Wiley?
Very good.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate your cooperating. I appreciate the public's cooperation, and we'll see what we can do for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Cassandra? You want to read the next case, please? Okay, we're still in session. Cassandra's gonna read the next case, please?
Case number Z33, 2019, JCC of Middlesex County, 1775 Oak Tree Road, Edison, New Jersey, 08820. Section 37, 63113 and 37111. Use in bulk variances sought to construct a two-story addition to expand the existing 19,442-square-foot Jewish Community Center. The proposed two-story addition will be made up of a conference center on the first floor, 6,413 square feet, and a preschool on the second floor, 4,500 square feet. This addition to the site will be an expansion of an use not permitted in this residential zone. Maximum lot coverage permitted is 30%. Proposed is 31.9%. Affected property is located in the RA zone, designated as Block 643Z, Lot 15, on the Edison Township Tax Map. All paperwork is in order.
Thank you, Cassandra. Good evening, Mr. Shire.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Bernard Shire, with the firm of Convery, Convery &amp; Shire, and I'm representing the Jewish Community Center of Middlesex County. We have a proposal to add a two-story addition of 6,413 square feet to the already existing center, for the purposes as stated by the Secretary to the Board. As you are, I am assuming, all aware, the Jewish Community Center and the YMCA abud each other, although two separate properties, and have served the community very, very well for many years now. And it is our intention to make sure we can continue to serve the community to a greater extent. The only variances that are required are use, and of course, this use was granted by the board many years ago. We're just seeking to expand it. And actually, in 2007, the YMCA was given a slightly larger addition permitted by this We have worked with Mr. Bignell and Mr. Carley, who have given us a lot of help over the months, putting this application together. The, we've managed to create a situation where the only bulk variance we're going to need is, while the requirements were permitted, impermeable surface is allowed 30% in the RA zone, which by the way, is a residential zone, and we are seeking only 31.9%, but it does require a variance. However, this is certainly not a residential use. I have Dorothy Rubenstein, the CEO of the JCC, here to just briefly give you an overview of what the center does and what we are intending for the addition. We have our engineer, planner, architect, and if necessary, a traffic engineer to describe all the various aspects of the application, hopefully to satisfaction of the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shire. You can go ahead.
Call Dorothy Rubenstein, please.
Okay. Ms. Rubenstein, if you'd raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, and state your full name for the record.
It's Dorothy Rubenstein.
Pull the microphone closer to you, please.
Dorothy Rubenstein.
All right, Ms. Rubenstein, how long have you been affiliated with the JCC of Middlesex County?
I've been affiliated as a member, a member, president of the board, and now currently CEO for the past 34 years.
All right, and how long has the JCC actually been there?
The JCC opens its doors at 1775 Oak Tree Road in 1984, so it's been 36 years.
All right, and could you just give us briefly an overview of what services the Jewish Community Center provides to the township community? Frankly, it doesn't just provide services to the Jewish people, right?
That's correct. So the JCC serves approximately 8,000 residents, and we are very proud of our diverse membership that reflects the diversity of our great community. The JCC is truly a microcosm of the way we hoped the world would be. We have programs for individuals, as well as families, ranging in age from newborns through our oldest member, who's almost 101 years young, and everybody in between. Our members recognize and appreciate the good work we do in our community. In 2001, we successfully opened our historic collaboration with the Matutchen YMCA, as they completed construction of the Edison Branch Y building. Together, we form an entity called the Community Campus, which provides increasingly greater depth of services to our continuously growing community. We have forged very positive relations with the Edison-Matutchen Interfaith Clergy, and host an annual event on their behalf, which brings an incredibly diverse group of people together to promote understanding and tolerance under the JCC roof. In the past 36 years, Edison Township has grown in population to now exceed 100,000 town residents. We consider ourselves an important community resource that is available to every resident, regardless of their religion, race, or nationality. Our highly acclaimed preschool reflects the cultural diversity of our community. As our faithful community acknowledges the good work we do in our Edison community, they have responded by asking not only for more programs that are run more frequently, but for greater programming capacity. Our Board of Directors and professional staff have responded by working toward a plan to expand our current building with a two-story addition to better meet our community's increasing needs, incorporating, sorry, incorporating state-of-the-art security, and, most importantly, accessibility throughout. The key impetus driving our expansion is twofold. Accessibility for our senior adults, getting them off the second floor where programs are now housed, in case of an emergency, where some are dependent on the use of an elevator, is a very difficult situation to navigate safely. Our need for increased capacity for our preschool. Currently, we have maintained a solid wait list for the past several years of over 60 children, because we are out of classroom space, and parents are anxious for their children to attend our well-regarded preschool. Our project seeks to address what our community is looking for: more secure program space, accessibility, and the ability to participate more often. Key to us is the ability to meet the needs of our great community, including more senior adult and adult programs that meet more often with a broader base variety, meeting greater wants and needs, greater preschool capacity, and, most important, expansion of our special needs programming. We sincerely hope that our project will be an important piece of the ongoing development in Edison Township. Thank you.
I'll check with the board. Does the board have any questions of Ms. Rubenstein? I didn't think so. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving forward, Mr.-
I'm gonna call Gregory Elko.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record.
Gregory Elko, E-L-K-O.
Mr. Elko, you're a licensed professional engineer of the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
For how long?
Over 21 years.
And in that capacity, have your credentials been accepted to testify before numerous zoning and planning boards of the state?
Yes, correct.
Okay, we'll accept his qualifications. Mr. Elko, I think you're going to have to put that there, so that the people can, there can see it, we can see it, and the TV can see it. Turn it. And you're going to need a microphone.
Thank you.
Now, now, now the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Again, my name is Gregory Elko. I'm the managing principal at Langin. We prepare the land development plans for the project. What I'd like to do this evening is walk through the site, the existing- like to do this evening is walk through the site, the existing conditions, talk about the proposed improvements. I'll review the variances. I'll provide testimony to support the variances, and so will a few of the other experts here. And then, we received several review letters that I'd like to walk through, too, if that's okay, so that we can show how we address the comments. So, I'm going to refer to our aerial plan here. This drawing is drawing GI 101. It's called General Location Plan. A version of this is in the plan set. What I'd like to do is just orient you to the site. North is straight up, and you can see here the site is cross-hatched. It's labeled Subject Site. It's located 1775 Oak Tree Road. It's block number 643Z and Lot number 15. It's about 6.2 acres in size. It contains a two-story existing building. It's about 26,000 square feet, and you can see there's a parking field to the north of the building, basically undeveloped wooded areas to the east and to the south. And immediately adjacent to this property is Lot 16, on which is located the existing YMCA building and that portion of the parking lot. There is a shared access and shared parking between the two sites, so the buildings basically touch right on the property line between the two properties. And there's full access to Oak Tree Road. The site, as was stated, is in the RA zone, and then, just surrounding the area, the properties to the north, to the east, and to the south are also residential zone properties in their residential uses. To the immediate west is the YMCA building, which is also in the same RA zone. And then, further beyond that, there's the OS Office Services Zone further to the west. The site is served by public utilities, water and sewer, and the, as stated here, Oak Tree Road fronts the site to the north. What I'd like to do now is walk through the proposed conditions, and I'm going to now refer to our drawing, CS 100 Master Site Plan. And, sorry about this, but north now is straight down, so you have to flip it in your head. But what the plan shows is the proposed expansion of the existing building. It's a two-story addition. The first floor is a conference center, about 6,413 square feet. The second floor are preschool facilities and office facilities, about 4,500 square feet. Included in the land development plans is the, some site amenities, the addition of sidewalks and a courtyard to the east of the site of the building. We're adding 27 parking spaces. There's site infrastructure improvements, like stormwater management. There's new utility connections. We're relocating the existing sheds from the side of the building to the rear of the building. We are basically expanding the parking lot in the corner of the site here. What I'd like to do is just walk through some of the zoning requirements to demonstrate that we're compliant. In a few cases, we're not compliant. We'll talk about the variances in a bit. The minimum front yard is 35 feet. We're providing 184.2 feet, so we comply. Minimum side yard is zero feet because of the two buildings essentially touching on the property line. So, that's an existing nonconformity that we're not changing as a result of this application. The rear yard is 60 feet, minimum required. We're providing over 278 feet. Minimum building coverage, or I'm sorry, maximum building coverage is 15 percent. We're providing 7.2 percent, so we comply. The minimum lot coverage that's being proposed is 32 percent. We're 30 percent is required, and I'll explain why we need that variance in a minute. Maximum building height, two and a half stories or 40 feet. We're proposing less than 40 feet, so we comply. And again, for parking, we do comply with the parking, and as I said, you, you review the site because of the cross-easement between the two properties as a whole. And based on the zoning, there's 187 existing spaces required, where 202 existing spaces are there at the site today. So, there's more than what's needed. And under proposed conditions, there's 221 spaces required and 229 spaces provided. So, we're providing a few extra spaces above the requirement, and I'll get into the parking calculation in a minute. I'd like to just talk about drainage briefly. There was a comment in one of the review letters to identify drainage. So, there's an existing subsurface drainage system below the parking lot today. As a result of the increase in impervious coverage, we need to expand that underground storm drain system. So, we're adding a few runs of pipe to do that. It'll add some additional volume for stormwater management to accommodate the increase in impervious coverage. And also, to address New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection stormwater quality requirements, we're adding a rain garden behind the courtyard and also what's called a Vortechnics unit. It's a mechanical unit that's placed along the pipe run to basically clean the water as it filters through. So, that's being proposed as part of this project as well. A few notes about landscaping. We are proposing to remove some trees and add some trees. We're proposing a vegetated strip of trees between the parking lot and the adjacent residential properties. We are proposing a fee in lieu of some of the required tree planting, which ordinance does allow. Because of the tightness of the site, we can't fit all of the trees that are necessary for the tree replacement. We can fit all except 25 trees. So, we are proposing a fee in lieu of that, and there's detailed calculations that support that, that calculation in the plan set. And as far as lighting goes, we are proposing lighting of the proposed driveway and courtyard areas and sidewalks. The lighting is a combination of existing, existing lighting facilities in the existing parking lot and proposed new light poles that are being added in the new parking lot as well. So, what I'd like to do is walk through the variances, and again, we'll have different professionals to talk about support of those variances. But Section 37.11.1 is a use variance. It's basically, we're requesting approval to permit an office, conference center, and preschool uses in the RA zone, where those uses are not permitted in that zone. And we'll hear more about that from our professional planner. I want to talk about parking. We originally made an application to request a variance for parking, but through the review process and in discussions with the town, we learned that the parking calculation that was originally submitted was actually not correct. The revised parking calculation was based on a previous approval for this site, which calculated parking based on floor area for the YMCA use and the recreation use based on floor area open to general public or members. So, when you apply that approved rate to the expansion, and specifically, the areas of recreation space within that expansion, and then you add the parking requirements for the classroom space and the office space, we actually no longer need the variance. We're slightly above. And as I said, in that calculation, we need 221 spaces. We're proposing 229 parking spaces, so we'll comply. A variance is requested to provide no loading spaces for the site. Technically, your ordinance, Section 37-60.4, requires a loading space for this, for a facility like this. A loading space is not needed. This is not the type of facility that requires buses to drop off students or pick up students. Any deliveries that are done here are done with a small delivery truck, and they just come through the front door. There's no big delivery trucks that service the site that would require a spot. And so, based on the operation of the facility, we do not need a loading space designated for deliveries for the facility. Let me talk about impervious coverage. This is Section 37-63.1. As I said, impervious coverage is 32 percent proposed. That slightly exceeds the maximum permitted of 30 percent. Primarily, what's driving it are the site amenities. The proposed courtyard area in particular, we're assuming to be impervious. The, the amenity is important for the new facility. It's outdoor recreation space, essentially. It's, it's needed for expansion of the recreation facilities that are here. But not only that, you can see the, there's some constraints that we have based on the unique site conditions of the property. So, we have the existing parking lot, which we're trying to, we need to maintain as much, as much as possible. And then, we have a very narrow area where it's limited the amount of parking spaces that we can put there, and the geometry of that, it's very narrow between the eastern property line and the building. And so, as a result of that narrowness, we get a parking lot that I would say is somewhat inefficient. It maintains two-way traffic in most of the parking lot aisles. There's one row that's one-way traffic, which is not inconsistent with what's there today in the other parking lot. But I would say that that unique site condition, the narrowness of the site, the fact that we're up in the corner of the site where the parking needs to be, and the inefficiencies that result from that, get us the impervious coverage that's a little bit over 30 percent. I would tell you that 30 percent impervious coverage is really more applicable to a residential use, which this is not. This is more of a commercial-type use, so I would submit to you that it's my opinion that really that 30 percent shouldn't necessarily apply. But it does, and we need to ask for the variance for that. I would also tell you that the stormwater system that I described before is designed for the 32 percent, so we're accommodating that, that design, that extra impervious coverage in our stormwater management design. All right, and then, finally, what I'd like to do is just walk through the review letters that we received. I think that my testimony and some of the other presenter's testimony will address all of the comments in here, but I'd like to start with the Carr Engineering Associates letter dated October 1st, 2019. Essentially, the comments are all "will comply" comments.
Mr. Carley? Mr. Carley, did they, they get your letter? Mr. Shire?
I'm going to get to that. Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm going to go in order, the, in the order that we received the letters. So, that was, that was the first letter dated October 1st. There was a follow-up on which I'll, I'll get to, we received today. The, the next letter, Bignell Planning Consultants, Inc., there's a few comments in here I'd just like to clarify. The date is September...
January 14th, 2020.
That one I do not have.
And, Mr. Elko, while we're on it, Mr. Bignell, some of the figures on the parking in your letter differ from what Mr. Elko has testified to. May I ask you why? Okay.
Okay, so forgive me. I'm looking at the January 14th, 2020 letter. Gotcha. Well, can I clarify one item on number 5A? Required 24-foot-wide drive aisles for 90-degree parking, provided 22.9? Existing, thank you. All right. Correct. It is one way.
Okay, I'm, I'm more interested in what I'm looking at.
The parking number?
Parking spaces, yes, the total number. What I'm looking at says 293 required, and Mr. Elko said 221.
And that was the old, original application that was made, based on the, what I would call the, the incorrect parking calculation. That was the original application.
If I can clarify.
Yes, Mr. Shire.
I have a copy. I brought along, I, I think I might have submitted it already, but we met with Mr. Bignell in 2007. It was determined that the parking requirements for the entire site were 187. And I do have, I do have copies of that.
Well, I guess, what's the number now? What are you proposing?
We're proposing 229. The number proposed doesn't change, but the calculation, based on a combination of the existing and proposed conditions, requires 221 parking spaces.
And you have 293, Mr. Bignell, so that's quite a bit different.
Yes, and, and, and I asked him just to present the information here at the meeting, so I accept the 221 because it's an existing situation.
Okay, fine. Yep, great.
All right, so reviewing the letter, essentially, all items are "will comply." I'd like to point out that item number J requires, 11J, I'm sorry, additional documentation related to the 75-foot offset from a pipeline. And just today, coincidentally, we received confirmation from the pipeline company that no part of the project is within 75 feet of their pipeline, and we'll make sure that we include that correspondence in the submission back to the town.
Make sure Cassandra gets it for the file.
We will. No problem. All right, and then, under item 11K about lighting, just want to describe the lighting scenario here. So, I think there was a request in the letter to look at lighting for both the combined parking lots for the YMCA and JCC parking lot. JCC has no control over the lighting on the YMCA's parking lot, even though there is a shared access agreement and parking agreement. So, we did an analysis of existing lighting conditions for the existing portion of the parking lot that's within Lot 15, the subject application. And we'll submit that lighting analysis to the town in our revised submission to show compliance, but what we found was generally, the lighting levels do meet the ordinance requirements, with the exception of one location in what I'll call the northwest corner of the property. And we found in that scenario that there's a lighting fixture that the lights are broken, essentially. And what we're going to propose is that there's an existing, we're going to reuse that existing light pole and repair it, and it should bring the existing portion of the parking lot into compliance. The remainder part of the parking lot is a combination of existing and proposed lights. Our lighting study shows that we can comply with ordinance requirements for that for Lot 15 in that part of the parking lot.
Mr. Bignell, are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
All right, and then, otherwise, all other items we'll, we'll address with our submission. If there's anything further you'd like me to comment on or someone from our team to comment on, we can do it, we can do it tonight. But I wanted to point out those specific items.
Your engineer, Mr. Carley, or Mr. Elko? Did you go over Mr. Carley's?
All right, so I'll, I'll do that now. This is the letter dated today. There's a couple of comments, or a couple of sections in the letter. The first is an engineering plan review, and essentially, all the items in there are noting that the item has been revised as recommended. There was a comment about describing the drainage system, which I did before. If that's acceptable, I, I can go on. And then, there's miscellaneous new comments, and I would say that essentially, all of the miscellaneous comments are "will comply" in one form or the, or another. There's a few things on here. We have to check whether or not they are applicable to our project, and we'll make sure that we document that when we submit it. So, it's, you know, we have to just do some homework about applicability of certain sections of the New Jersey Administrative Code and things like that. But essentially, we'll comply with the, the comments that were made in the letter.
Mr. Carley?
Yeah, and those comments that Mr. Elko refers to are those comments that I just asked them to assure the Board that they will comply with state laws that relates to childcare centers. Obviously, they have an existing childcare center on the site, and I'm assuming they're in compliance with the law with the existing center, and that they will comply with the law on the future center. Yes.
And you're satisfied with everything else?
Yes, as long as I get those certifications. And the, the, the front part of my letter follows Mr. Carr's previous letter, and it reflects the fact that Mr. Elko's revised his plans to address Mr. Carr's previous comments.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, for the record, we did receive a review from Middlesex County. Generally, the items on here are related to the frontage, not necessarily on-site. We're in the process of addressing those comments, and, you know, those will be addressed when we submit back to the county. But I noted that the county approval is a condition of the town approval. The county did recommend approval subject to those conditions. That concludes my part of the presentation.
Does the Board have any questions of Mr. Elko?
Yes, ma'am, Chair.
Yes, Mr. Betty.
Sir, the first question I have is, is this addition, is this addition going to be a standalone building, or is it going to be connected to the existing building?
Connected to the existing building.
So, the wall that's in between the existing building and the, and the new building, will that require to have any foundation work for additional load-carrying capacities done?
We have an architect that's going to present that can answer that question related to the building.
Oh, I thought you were the engineer.
The engineer architect will address the building-related comments.
Well, this, this question is also for, for the engineer. Since this is not a residential building, it's a commercial building, does it need to apply with the seismic requirements of the, of the New Jersey Building Code?
I'm going to let the architect answer that. I'm a site engineer, not, not building.
Any other questions for Mr. Elko?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Taglinetti?
Simple question. Over on the east side of the property, there's some residential homes, three, four of them, in very light font on the site drawing. It says PVC fence. I don't know what the extent is, but will you be blocking some of this driveway with a fence? a fence separating the site from the residential property to drive through the parking areas?
We are actually using that, this green space there, we're using that green space to plant trees.
Any other questions for Mr. Elko? None? Okay, thank you, Mr. Elko. Mr. Shire, moving on.
Call Mr. Anthony Guzzo, our architect.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and please state your full name for the record, and please...
Anthony Guzzo, with the firm of Guzzo and Guzzo Architects, 608 Ridge Road, Lynnhurst, New Jersey.
May we have some qualifications, please, sir, just for the record?
Yes, I have a five-year bachelor's degree of architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey for a few years, over 20 years approximately. I'm also licensed to practice in multiple states throughout the Northeast, about six others.
Okay, thank you, we'll accept your qualifications, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guzzo, you were retained by the applicant to prepare a plan for the proposed addition to their JCC?
Correct.
And could you please give the board a brief overview of what the plan is, and give them an idea of what it's gonna do?
Sure. When we had gotten involved, the JCC, we had several meetings, just trying to really look at the needs of what they were looking for with their building. The need for meeting room space was definitely at the high portion of what they had on their wish list, and also, you know, some additional classroom space. So those were the two main objectives here, and, you know, the existing building is a two-story building, kind of flanked on either side, to the north and the south, with the gymnasium on the north and a pool to the south. In that middle section, we had the classrooms, and on the lower section, we had service areas such as locker rooms and storage, and things to kind of accommodate that lower area. So when we looked at the opportunities to expand this building on-site, of course, we knew we had to connect it back to the existing and try to ease that connection, because we really didn't want to separate people traveling in and moving through the building to a remote spot. So what we did is we looked at that, and we also looked at the daily operations that were going on with the preschool. Those two things were mixing together, and, you know, at certain key times when the preschool is coming in, you know, it is mixing with those members that are coming in for the JCC and also the YMCA. So we thought that to actually have the building be a little bit further to the east, which was naturally our opportunity with the open site, we would actually create an area for the drop-off and pickup of the preschool area to that, to try to alleviate some of that traffic that's going on on-site, as far as that happening sooner to the west. We drew that to the east to free up some of that space that goes on for the general membership that's accessing the JCC and the YMCA. So what we did is there's a connecting corridor that runs through the building that was exiting out to the east. So naturally, we thought it would be a great way to still come in and have that connection when you enter the building to the JCC, to actually come and connect through these additional meeting rooms. Those meeting rooms were important, because they had so many programs going on and lack of space, that this addition really served that. So we had proposed, in addition with these program requirements, a two-story building that would connect to the existing. So there was an existing corridor that I was referring to, an entry lobby off to the west side that's connected over to the YMCA, and we are connecting through a corridor to the new portion. I think it was important through several conversations to make this really a true connection, not something that is not going to be used, is too far off. So I think it serves that very well, it connects onto the building and becomes an integral part of the existing building as we have it now. So you actually circulate through the existing lobby, and you enter into the first-floor area, which is about 50 by about 130 linear feet, again, off to the east side. And towards the north side, which is our parking area, we created a new stair that leads up for the preschool, and additional entrances for some other activities that maybe might be going on in the meeting rooms. So that first floor consists of three different meeting rooms. We have a small, a medium, and a large, and then we have some service areas that actually complement those additional spaces that we are creating. So we do have two exit stairs, which we are adding, and I think that we, basically, when we looked at this, through the additions of the classrooms, we just wanted to make sure that this area had enough exits for the preschool that were exiting out and didn't necessarily have to go through the lobby. So that was the reason for the additional stairways, but we are connecting onto the building. So through those connections, we have access to the stairs, both up and down. And on the second floor, we have an area of about 60 feet, it's a smaller footprint, so we're looking at about 6,400 square feet for the first floor, and about 4,500 for the upper floor. The upper floor consists of some expanded areas for the preschool, two additional classrooms, we have some director administrative offices, a conference room for parents to come in and meet with the school, a teacher's room. So that occupies a little bit smaller footprint than the first floor, and again, that favors the north side, and actually overhangs the new addition by about three feet, just to give some interest and some element that overlooks the east side and the courtyard area. I'm just going to refer to the exterior rendering right now, just to kind of give you a feel and a flavor for what we were looking to do. The existing masonry building of the JCC, we were looking to just maintain that, it's kind of has a little bit of a unique architecture. It's a split-face concrete block building with, you know, some details that probably were, you know, significant in the 80s roughly, when it was constructed. So we wanted something that would also tie in and create its own space. So what we did is, you're looking here at the north side of the building, and we created this, you know, medium-to-dark gray facade here that creates the new entry point, and it gives a visibility to that in a more significant way than just creating a doorway. So we use that as kind of a connector piece to link the old part to the new section. The new section is a two-story building, again, that's consisting of a brick down below that kind of wraps up and around with this kind of rectangular element that sits above it, which is the two new classrooms, and that overlooks this courtyard space. So again, we wanted to really try to tie in the consistency throughout this, not only in plan, but also in elevation, and actually have the new building start to utilize some of the exterior space that was there. So we saw that as a large opportunity. So, you know, we did have some challenges with some of the additional parking and things like that was going into this, but we feel that, you know, creating that exterior space was very important to this as a program element and item, and also gaining the additional space that we need, so from a programming standpoint, they could offer much more varied programs to different-sized audiences. So I think that, you know, we accomplished most of those goals through the design itself, but also creating a consistency between the existing building and the proposed. So we feel, you know, we're happy with the outcome, and I think that the new addition will provide these kind of unique spaces and kind of give them a good future as far as their offerings and kind of growing into this new space.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Betty, do you have your questions now?
Mr. Guzzo, I just have two or three questions. Since this is a commercial building, does this need to apply with any seismic requirements per the New Jersey Building Code?
Yes, it does.
So since the existing building you said was built in the 80s, I presume it had no seismic resistance at all. So when we add this portion onto it, how are we gonna take care of the fact that it now has a much larger mass, so it will generate a lot more seismic forces?
Yes, we actually were upgraded our zone for earthquake several years ago, so our new structures are compliant with that, and this new structure will be. So this structure is abutting the existing, but it has its own structural integrity, which meets those seismic requirements.
But, Mr. Guzzo, the first floor cantilever is the lower one by three feet?
Correct.
Which means that your walls do not go straight through. I don't see any columns in your drawings. So if the upper one cantilevers out and nothing goes straight through, and you're connecting this to the wall in between the two buildings, we are transferring forces to a building that cannot take those forces.
Yes, again, these drawings are at a preliminary stage right now.
Okay.
We have met with our structural engineer and do have a structural design for this, so if you'd like, I can give you a brief overview of the structure that would be going in, the skeletal structure that would be supporting the cantilever, and also supporting the attachment over to the existing.
Is it possible for us to request a copy of that, Madam Chair?
Sure. Do you have one? Do you have anything?
I do not. I do not have that. It's preliminary conversations and preliminary design that my structural engineer has right now, but I could lead you through some of that if that's helpful, and...
If you could, that'd be nice.
Sure. Sure, what we are proposing here, you'll have a cantilever off to the east side of three feet. So we are adding structure along the perimeter and a structural beam that will support the cantilever out, so that's our structural support that's going to deal with that overhang. And actually, what we are doing is we're putting structure in this wall, which is further away from the existing building. We did not want to bear into the existing structure, so we're trying to stay away from that, so we actually have an independent structure that stands on its own. So we're actually doing a double cantilever here with the structure, so we'll have, we have steel columns that will be going in here, and we're actually cantilevering over to this wall, so we don't disturb any of the footing, foundations, or structural integrity of that masonry wall.
Okay, so that makes more sense. So in other words, we, in that case, I think there should be a seismic joint between these two buildings.
There is.
There is?
Yeah.
It's not shown, but there will be?
Yes, that would be on the construction details that we submit for building permit.
And does the upper level have to be ADA compliant as well, or is it ADA compliant?
Yes, it is ADA compliant.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Taglinetti?
The HVAC system, can you describe it? Do you know what it's going to be?
Yes, we're in early designs with that. That's going to be a rooftop heating and air conditioning unit that is gonna feed the second floor with independent zones, probably going to be two to three zones right now.
So it's going to sit on the roof?
It is going to sit on the roof.
How are we going to shield it or hide it?
We are gonna screen it. It is going to be set back on the, right now, it's gonna be set back on the low roof here with screening around it, and it's going to feed into the lower section.
I might make the suggestion, if you're going to have what appears to be a glass curtain wall on that side of the building, that you wrap the RTU with similar material, or brick, something that makes that area look similar to the...
Yeah, we typically choose an aesthetic material that's gonna be compatible with the materials on the building, so we can have that screening that kind of just ties it in and blends it back into the building backdrop there. So they will be further set back, so there's limited visibility, but there will be some.
As long as you're not putting hardy panel around it when you...
No, no.
Mr. Bignell?
Yeah?
I'm staring at you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, maybe we might make that a condition of approval, so we look at it, so you're satisfied with what it looks like?
Okay.
As part of the approval.
Now, any other questions for Mr. Guzzo? None? Moving along, Mr. Shire?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I do have Alan Lothian, who is a licensed traffic engineer here. If the board wants to hear from him, traffic is not really a big part of this application, but if the board would feel more comfortable having him briefly address the flow on the property, I'd be happy to call him.
I'm looking at the board. Yes, Mr. Bignell?
We're talking about one parking space difference, so I don't think the change is gonna be substantial.
Yeah, I don't think so either. We appreciate it.
All right, at this point, I would call Sean Moronski, who's our licensed planner.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And state your full name for the record.
My name is Sean, S-E-A-N, Moronski, M-O-R-O-N-S-K-I, and I'm with Lang and Engineering and Environmental Services.
Thank you.
Some qualifications, please, sir?
Mister?
Sure. I have a master's in planning from New York University. I've been a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners since 1999, a New Jersey Licensed Professional Planner since year 2000. I've been qualified for planning and zoning boards in over 100 municipalities in New Jersey and elsewhere.
Okay, thank you, we'll accept your qualifications.
Mister Moronski, you've been retained by the applicant to review the planning aspects of this project, is that correct?
Yes.
And as such, have you become thoroughly familiar with the proposal and the existing facility?
Yes, I have. I reviewed the plans, I visited the site and the surrounding area, reviewed the relevant sections of the zoning ordinance and master plan, as well as the correspondence from your professionals.
Right. Could you give the board a brief overview, from a planning standpoint, how you feel the project is consistent with good planning in the state of New Jersey? First of all, is it fair to say that this particular use as a community center is inherently beneficial use?
Yes, it is. As we are requesting a use variance, that the JCC, which has been serving the community for 36 years, qualifies as an inherently beneficial use. When we think of those type of uses, we think of schools, houses of worship, hospitals, community centers, and fall into that aspect. And for the many reasons that were described by Mrs. Rubenstein, the organization serving over 8,000 members throughout the community, programs across the age spectrum, and serving a broader community beyond the Jewish population, and they're involved in a community campus setting with the neighboring YMCA, which helps in terms of broader community outreach. So for those reasons, I do believe that the existing and the proposed use with the improvements qualify as inherently beneficial. Now, by being an inherently beneficial use, that means that the positive criteria is addressed, because the use serves a greater public purpose. However, with regards to the negative criteria, we have to address, there are four, what they call four prongs to it, it's called informally the SEKA test. SEKA is the name of the case, case law, which discusses inherently beneficial use and what the client has to address. And the first of those criteria is, the board has to identify the public interest at stake. And the public interest here has to do with continuing to allow the JCC to provide the range of services to various community groups. Couple of issues that were brought up, accessibility, as well as to provide more opportunities for their preschool program, which has a substantial waiting list right now. As part of the second criteria, we have to identify any detrimental effects that could result if the variance were granted. When you have a building expansion, either up or toward a property line, there are concerns about encroachment, there are concerns about the intensity of a particular use, not just within the building, but also the activity on and off the site. And then also with site plan changes, there are concerns to be addressed regarding the additional impervious surface, stormwater issues, tree removal, concerns about lighting, some of which were touched on in Mr. Elko's testimony. So the third part of the criteria is to reduce any detrimental impact. The board may, if practical, impose reasonable conditions on the use. While the building addition, as proposed, is still a substantial distance from the side lot line adjacent to the residential lots, and it more than meets the side yard setback requirement. We are increasing the proposed floor area ratio, although we are well below the 0.25 maximum, or 0.14. The additional floor area is designed to enhance the services that are part of the JCC's mission. JCC's mission, in terms of improving daily functions for the classrooms for the preschool, improving functions of administrative services and programming as well, all of which are an essential part of the operations. The parking area meets the requirements. There is the courtyard area, which is fenced, which is to enhance outdoor recreation opportunities, including for the preschool students. The stormwater plan is addressed consistent with New Jersey DEP regulations. There's a rain garden proposed on the site to help in terms of water quality. There are additional shade trees proposed. Along the residential lot line, there are trees proposed to be planted to improve the screening on the site. And in terms of the lighting, that upon an analysis that Mr. Elko discussed, that the lighting levels do meet the standards, except for the one fixture, which has been said that will be repaired. So when you consider all those factors, then you weigh the public, is the public interest being advanced versus what is considered the negative criteria? And on balance, would the grant to the variance cause substantial detriment to the public good? And I do believe that you can grant this variance, as it would not have a substantial detriment to the public good. Adding the proposed addition or the other improvements, it enhances the use and the operations of the site that's been here for 36 years, providing services and programming throughout the entire community. So I do believe you can grant the D1 use variance as inherently beneficial.
And in light of the fact that this use has been in existence for 36 years, can this be granted by any substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance?
No. While the master plan designates the land use as a place of worship or cemetery, while the site is religiously affiliated in a sense, it's not a place of worship. There was a use variance granted in 2007 for this site, and it has operated for over three decades on this site in this residential zone without substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan.
And in light of the fact that for the drainage provisions that have been made by the engineering, is it fair to say that the maximum lot coverage variance would be de minimis, since only 1.9% over what is permitted, considering especially this is a residential zone?
Yes, that is correct, and I would like to say the maximum lot coverage, I believe, can be granted under the C2 criteria, where the benefits of granting the variance would outweigh any potential detriments, as was discussed with regards even with the additional pavement. A lot of that is due to the new courtyard area, which is to enhance recreation on site, and there have been measures taken with regards to addressing concerns about stormwater, the additional pipes that were mentioned by Mr. Elko as part of the drainage system, the rain garden that's proposed as well. And we further, purposes of zoning, appropriate use of lands contributing to general welfare, the requested variance helps contribute to enhancing the site operations, and we're providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a range of uses for much the same reason, allowing for the enhancement of the site to, so the JCC can continue to provide the services at a higher or higher quality. And the variance does not have a substantial impact to the public good for the reasons with regards to a relatively de minimis increase in impervious coverage and issues such as stormwater being addressed, and no substantial detriment to the zoning ordinance or master plan. The site has been here, had been granted previously by use variance, and the operations with the expansion, even with the relatively small impervious coverage, would not have a substantial impact on the zone plan or the master plan. And for those reasons, I believe you can grant the maximum lot coverage variance under the C2 criteria.
I have no other questions.
Does the board have any questions on Mr. Moronski? Mr. Mansouri?
I'm not sure if this is for the planner or the architect, but I do have one quick question. The area that's going to be considered open, there's next to the existing building or the new development, I'm assuming that's going to be, you know, not, it's not going to be like a playground, but they're actually right next to the parking lots, right? Essentially, just a sidewalk over. Are there going to be any traffic cards? I forget the technical, don't forget me.
Ballers?
Yeah.
Ballers?
Yeah. Is there, are there, will there be ballers on that side, or not necessarily?
Again, Greg Elko, yeah, we can, that was a comment in one of the review letters, so yeah, we'll address that as necessary to make sure that there is appropriate stop so that cars can't go over the curb and into that location.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? None? Mr. Shire?
That's the applicant's case.
Okay. Right now, I'll go out to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Anyone outside of 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Okay, I'll close the case. Mr. Shire, do any summation?
Just very briefly, I'm sure there's probably no one in this room that hasn't benefited from the services of a YMHA, YMCA, or Jewish Community Center. I know I certainly did, growing up in Perth Amboy. These services are provided without profit. It's all reaching out to the public and helping everybody. It's a great benefit to the town. The first time I went in to the JCC to meet with my clients, I was amazed what a great operation it is compared to what I was used to growing up. So I think it's a boon to the township of Edison to have this being done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shire. That being said, I'll go to the board, please.
Mr. Ski Bar? I just, a question. Now, any of the office or facilities, are they for rental use or anything, or just?
I'm sorry? Is it for rental?
Yeah.
No, it's not rented out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I'll still go to the board for a motion, please.
Okay, Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve. I do think that this is a benefit to the community and to the township as a whole. I don't see any detrimental impact. As a condition of approval, I'm sorry, Phil, you want to just?
Yes.
As a condition of approval, you want to state exactly what you would like, Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, you will provide drawings and renderings depicting the RTU roof enclosure for our review and acceptance as a condition of approval.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can we also request a copy of the structural drawings, please?
Did you hear that, Mr. Shire? Part of the condition of approval, a copy of the?
The structural drawings.
Structural.
Absolutely.
Okay, and?
They will comply with the engineer and the planner's report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have everything covered? We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Cassandra, please.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Patel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Mansouri?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes, on the motion.
Vice Chair Ski Bar?
Yes, on the motion.
And Chair Zelman Federer?
Yes, on the motion. Okay, thank you, Mr. Shire.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to, are you here for the next case also, ma'am?
No.
Oh, you're not?
Yes.
Okay, fine. We'll take a five-minute break, just so we can stretch our legs, and then we'll get to the next case. Ladies and gentlemen, we've just been told the last case that is on the agenda, case Z46-2019 Main Street LLC. The attorney for the case, there was another attorney here representing an objector to the matter, and they have been discussing the matter out in the hallway, and the objector attorney and the attorney for the applicant have decided to postpone this, so they can talk over some of the things, so maybe some items can be ironed out before we even come back and put it on record. So having said that, the case will now be on for March 31st. You will not get a new notice. This is your notice, and then on March 31st, we will hear the case, and hopefully, the attorney for the objector will be able to work out some things with the attorney for the applicant, okay? I thank you for your patience. Unfortunately, I just found this out now, or otherwise, I would have told you much sooner, so you wouldn't have to sit and listen to everything you did this evening. I'm sorry, but maybe you got an education. Do you have a question, sir? I really shouldn't take it, but do you have a question about the date?
Actually, I thought I came here just for listening my case, okay?
I just told you what happened. There's two attorneys. One, there is an objector to the matter, and he hired an attorney today. That attorney and the attorney that's representing the applicant have been discussing the matter out in the hallway, and they are going to discuss the matter further, and they are hopefully going to iron out some of the problems and the objections that are on record. And they asked that, not us, the attorneys asked, that we postpone the case so they can discuss it and have the case on the meeting date of March 31st. So you will not get another notice, but the case will go on on March 31st, okay? And at that time, you'll be able to be heard, okay? Yeah. I really shouldn't be taking this, but I just want to give you the courtesy of it, because I know you've been sitting here all evening. Yes, sir?
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
My question is, did they specify what the objection was?
No, no, that I don't need. All I know is that the objector attorney is talking to the applicant attorney, and they're going to try and work some things out, and they would like to postpone it before they present their case. So that's where it stands right now. So again, March 31st, okay? You won't be getting any other letters in the mail, so just remember that, please. Okay, having said that, Cassandra, do we have any? I'm sorry, what, sir?
One more question, madam?
Sure, very quickly.
We came here for that case to represent, and we have collected some signature objecting the whole matter with the objection. Can we submit that later here?
I'll let my attorney handle that.
You can't submit any type of petition. If they want to come and testify, the next time this matter is listed, they can come and actually testify. They have to be subject to everyone hearing their testimony, and they have to be sworn under oath. So, no, he has a list of people that he wants objecting, but everyone who?
Oh, you're on the list?
We can't accept a list that is signed by people, but we can certainly hear your testimony when the case matter is heard, when we go out to the public.
You can't speak now?
No, no. Well, you don't have anything to say, because we don't know what kind of cases are going to be put on. And again, as I said earlier this evening, and as Mr. Bignell said, this board is a quasi judicial board. We go by, it's called MLUL rules. The book is about this thick. The rule is, the case is put on, after the case is put on, then I go out to the public within 200 feet, then I go out outside of 200 feet, and there's a summation, and then we vote. So you can't speak until after the case is heard.
I have just one quick question. If there's, like, there are needing to maybe change things to make it more public, are we, the public, going to know about that prior to the meeting on March 31st? If there's changes in the variance and so forth that they do have?
You should probably check with the zoning office, because if there are any changes, be 10 days prior, excuse me, 10 days, 10 days prior to March 31st. If there are going to be any amendments, everything has to be into the zoning office. So everything will be at the zoning office for the public to view, and it has to be 10 days before.
Can they postpone again on the 31st?
Anybody, they can. I mean, we've had, we had one case that was postponed like four or five times. I mean, we don't have any control over that. It's whatever the attorneys would like.
Is there any way, because we've been here for two hours here with my group, even?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Is there any way before coming here, we can call and confirm the case will be moved on?
Well, again, all night, I thought, you heard me give a five or 10-minute break, and I did that purposely, because I thought we were going to hear the case and be here till 10:00, 10:30. But then, at that point, just a couple, little, a couple of minutes ago, we were told that the attorneys have been speaking and they want it postponed. So there's no guarantee, I'm sorry. All I can do is what I'm telling you, okay? And as I say, I appreciate the fact that you've been here all evening, and if I would have known this sooner, I would have told you much sooner, so you wouldn't have to be here. But as I said, I just called for an adjournment of five or 10 minutes to give the board a chance to use the restrooms, figuring we were going to come back and be here till 10:30, 11 o'clock, and instead, we're not, okay?
Can we make a request to have our meeting first then, next time? Or is that out of your purview as well?
I don't do the agenda. The agenda is done by the office, so.
Can I put the request into the office?
Well, you can, but it won't help. I mean, there's certain things that have to go first, okay? So having said all of that, and again, I appreciate everybody's patience.
I have a question from the council.
To the attorney? Yes.
Yes. You know, you mentioned that it was canceled because one of the objecting attorney made a deal to postpone it. Of course, there are 20 other people here who may also get an attorney next time. So is it possible, again, that, you know, me or anybody else can get an attorney and say, hey, we want to postpone it again?
Anybody who wants to get their own attorney, if you're paying for it, you can get your own attorney.
No, I understand that, but how is it that one attorney or one objector's attorney can dictate that the case is being adjourned? That's what I want to know.
Let me just stop you.
Sure, please.
There's no side agreements or deals, as far as we understand it. Understand that we, as a board, do not know exactly the extent, nor do we get involved in the discussions between objectors and the attorney for the applicant. If you have a concern that you wish to raise directly with the attorney, you know, their information is available from the clerk's office, you can raise it directly with the applicant's attorney. If you want to have representation, you're permitted to get that representation. If your attorney and the objector's attorney, or rather, the applicant's attorney decide they need to address certain concerns, they can. As far as I understand it, they're addressing concerns. I know nothing beyond that, and they are permitted under the MLUL to proceed with their case as they deem fit. If they wanted to, they could have come in here today and said, we're withdrawing this to refile it later. They could do that as well. They are permitted to do so.
Counsel and the board, I absolutely understand that you do have very limited information, as the president said, that, you know, it happened at the last few minutes, and, you know, that's obviously not your fault, and, you know, we're upset because we waited, but that's without your fault completely. I do understand that, but that part, I have no qualm about. The part that I don't understand is that I assume that the attorney for the applicants, they can withdraw or ask for a postponement any time that they can, they desire.
Again, unfortunately.
But I would assume that the board would have a say in it, whether you will allow that to happen or not.
We have to allow that.
You have to allow that. So whether they were in the objecting attorney deal or not, they could have said, I want to postpone my case until next time, without giving any reason.
Correct.
And would have still agreed it.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay, okay. Having said that, Cassandra, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, okay, just so everybody's clear, because I have to place it on the record, excuse me.
Wait, 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 wait.
That's not entirely accurate, just so you're aware, there are limits, because a case, once it moves forward, it's either going to move forward within a reasonable time period, or it will be withdrawn and refiled. So there are certain time constraints, however, they are allowed to, I mean, this application can have that adjourned. This is reasonable, it's permitted under the MLUL, okay?
I hope there's no malicious intent here, okay?
Cassandra, are there any resolutions?
No, nothing else.
Okay, there being no resolutions, motion, please?
To, go on.
A motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.